Wendy Carver Herbert, how are you?
Good morning, Matt. I'm good.
Did I get that right?
You got that right.
Nailed it. God bless it. Thank you for coming today. I know it's an early, early interview. But you're running for city council of Garden City, correct?
That's right.
Oh, my gosh. I have fallen into this thing. I've been interviewing so many people. I started mixing up mayor and city council. So I'm so glad I nailed, I nailed the last name and the position. So, look, talk to me about why you're running for Garden City City Council.
Okay. Well, it really comes down to this fact that, you know, Matt, I really genuinely love Garden City. I have, I care about it deeply and I'm, I'm retired. And so in my retirement, I have spent the last decade, the last decade almost, really trying to make a difference in Garden City. And I've been doing that on a couple of different levels. I've been doing it in my neighborhood and for my neighbors. When it's come to advocating for more compatible development in our neighborhood. I've been, I've been making a difference for families of young children by teaching ready for kindergarten classes and being a part of the Garden City Early Learning Collaborative to provide resources to, to families so that they can help prepare their young children to be ready for school and to better prepared for school success. And I've been engaged in the Garden City Public Library as a foundation board member. We've been raising money for the phenomenal programs that the library puts on, including the Bookmobile that goes out into our community and reaches families and children that aren't necessarily able to get into our library. And so as a result of all of that, I've really learned a lot about the city. I've been a highly engaged citizen and I've learned a lot about land use and planning. And, you know, when I started to take a look at what was, what was going to happen is, is the city's really at a pivotal time. We're going to be, we are going to have a brand new mayor for the first time in 20 years. So I think, you know, that that's going to bring in some new thoughts and some new energy. But I think it also could be beneficial to the city and, you know, to, you know, whoever steps into that role, to have a really strong council that has, has background and experience already in leadership, already has a good understanding of the city and who's really ready to step up. And that's, when I took a look at it, I really felt that I met that criteria and I'm ready to do that.
Being connected in the way that you are, first off, I think it's awesome, like absolutely incredible that you work on, you know, preschool and, you know, just setting kids up for success. I've been talking to a lot of people about education and specifically early childhood reading. And having that success in the first couple of years with learning how to read and becoming fluent by third grade is so fundamental. And, you know, it's almost like, look, we can invest now as a state and as a community to make sure we have more kids reading and more kids successful in that early elementary experience, or we just invest later either through social programs or, you know, incarceration. I think it's something like 70 to 80% of people incarcerated in the state of Idaho are, can't read fluently or illiterate. You know, so you have, you have these real problems where it's like, we have to present more opportunity, more success for young people so that when they turn 18, they have something to offer the world. And that will make, you know, negative, negative interactions, be it drugs, prostitution, whatever it might be, that'll make them look less attractive. It's like, well, I'm not going to do that because I could just go make $90,000 doing this thing. And like, I like that thing. I'm not going to run drugs, right? It's like, as silly as that sounds, that is a decision that has, like, people come to and they're gonna, they're gonna take whatever rational position they think is, is the one for them. And if they feel like, hey, this is all I can do, then that's all they will do. And it's like, anyway, I don't know, I'm going off.
Well, yeah, I would say, you know, I would say I completely agree with where you started on that conversation in terms of how important early childhood education is. And, 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 you know, parents are a child's first and most influential teacher. And what we do through the collaborative is we actually really try to provide resources to parents so that they can, so that they can have an understanding about how important that role is. And really, we're just trying to promote three simple things. Read, talk, and play with your young children. And if you can do those things and try to turn everyday moments into learning moments, you'll be surprised at how, how well they will be able to adapt when they get, when they, you know, start school and can be, make them better prepared.
I have three boys. My talking to them is like, you sit down. No, I don't, you already, you already told me be quiet. Like, you go to your room. I don't want to hear from you. Like, that's as much as like, anyway, look, back to, I'm sorry, back to Garden City. So you've been involved in a lot of things. What are things, because again, like I have a lot of questions, but what are the big things that you feel like are jumping out? We're like, okay, this is something that I can lean into. And, and like, this is either a problem or this is something that needs to be flushed out or any of that.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, certainly like all of the cities around us, but in particular Garden City in particular is facing opportunities for development and growth. City, Garden City is a city in transition. There's lots of opportunity for, you know, redevelopment essentially. And because of the experience that I've had in, in my neighborhood, I've learned a whole lot about zoning and planning, the importance of the comprehensive plan, the importance and the role that it plays versus how the zoning code works, which is the zoning law essentially, that lays out what cities, what, what landowners can do with their property. And just to give you a little background about how I got into this is in 2018, there was a proposed apartment complex that was proposed right in my backyard, right in the middle of a single family neighborhood. And it was four stories, 15 feet from our property line. And we're like, wow.
And were you predominantly like one story, single family residence, like rancher style? And they're like, four stories?
Yeah, and it was on the greenbelt, it faced one side on the greenbelt, and then it was, it surrounded almost on, on three and a half sides by all single family. And so, you know, what I learned through the process is, is there had been a zoning change that had taken place about four years prior to that, that had changed the zoning of many of our properties. It had basically upzoned it from 10 units an acre to 35, and nobody had known about that. So that in itself was somewhat problematic. But, but what I was able to do is I, you know, I really got deeply into trying to understand what the code said and what it was. And then I got neighbors involved and we started advocating. And went out and got drone photos of what it looked like from a four-story view into people's backyards. And, you know, basically laid out the case that said, you know, this isn't really a great fit. And so what ended up happening is that the project, the initial project as it was proposed did not get approved. But as a result of it, the developer came to the table and worked with us in the neighborhood and came up with a much more compatible design than made it so that they could still be the, the multifamily apartment complex that it intended to be, but it fits so much better into our neighborhood. It did things to try to protect the views from what the apartment would potentially have into these family neighborhoods. So obviously, your, your listeners can't necessarily see this illustration, but I kind of always like to do this. It's sort of like this L shape. You have a single family home, predominantly all a single story. And then you have this multifamily that is much, much taller. And the ability of what, what happens is people can see out of their patios and their living rooms and everything down into these other people's yards and many people who have their back, you know, windows that open up into their yards. And what that does for people who are in these, these neighborhoods, and it could be single family, it can be dual family.
Sure.
But yet, when you just have this imbalance of really height, looking into these neighborhoods, it's very imposing and it's very invasive. And it, it takes away your sense of privacy and your sense of security and wellbeing. And so that's really been what I've been advocating for with the city really since that time. And, and what that developer did is they came up with a plan. It included garages as buffers. It actually came up with a plan where it was only two stories facing the neighbors, and then it did three stories on the back. So it was able to still accomplish what it had hoped to accomplish, had a little bit less density than what they were originally proposing. But yet it was far more compatible. It was designed in a way that actually looked and fit in our neighborhood. And so I think it's possible to achieve that sort of a thing, but we want to make sure that, that the code, the zoning code can support that. And, and that's what I've been working towards. So even just within the last several months, we've been successful in getting language put into the zoning code that, that would require multifamily development that is going to be next to predominantly single family neighborhoods, that it take the, the views and what we call in the development business, view sheds would be from these apartments into neighboring properties. And then it would, it would require them to take, take measures to try to alleviate as much intrusive views into these neighboring properties. And that can be done through, as I said, putting structures in between the higher buildings. It can be landscaping. It can be where the windows are placed. It can be just really trying to develop in a much more sensible way that can still fit. Because if the zoning is the zoning, you know, if it's allowed, it's, it is. But I've also been working with the city to try to take a look at the zoning in our neighborhood because of what had happened with this, this 250% zoning increase that happened from 10 units an acre to 35. And it removed the height restriction in these, these, these low and medium density neighborhoods or low, yeah, what we call residential neighborhoods.
Yeah. And when did that 250% increase happen?
That was in 2015.
15, okay.
And again, the, the problem was that is that nobody, that nobody knew about.
Yeah, yeah. So it put them kind of. Which, which is how you came to this in like 2017 or 18. Gotcha, gotcha.
So, you know, we've been working to get this zoning change into place that would, would take a look at all these properties that this happened to and have them zoned more properly into what we call a medium density residential, which would be instead of 35 units, it'd be 15 units. And it would put back into a height restriction back into the code. So we've been able to accomplish at least getting that. But the properties, at least what's called kind of the, the structure or the, the zoning district, the city is in the process of still trying to identify the properties that would actually go into that. My whole thing is it said, well, if it was R3 before, let's just put all the R3 into the RM and then let's just move forward. And they've kind of proposed a little bit different plan. And so I'm working with them.
Take, take these off, just take them off, crunch them down and then put them on.
I think it keeps running down my back of my head.
Yeah, yeah.
These, these, these headphones. So, anyway, yeah, so just, you know, I've just been successful in bringing forward, you know, number one, doing my research, being well-prepared, as we talked, as we're getting ready to come into this, being very respectful, understanding perspective where, you know, where they're coming from and really being able to work, worked on coming up with some workable solutions. And, and as a result of that, I've learned an enormous amount about land use and planning, more than your average citizen for sure.
Sure.
And city councils, that's really where they spend a good portion of their time. And decision-making revolves around development and, and land use. So, you know, okay, what else could I be doing as it relates to the bigger city? Is that I think it's time just to take another look at the comprehensive plan. And comprehensive plan is what, first of all, it's required by state law for cities to have these local just, and it lays out the vision of how the city wants to be, what, how it wants to develop. But it really is just a vision document. It's not really a, a law binding document per se. It's the zoning code. That's the law binding component of it. But the two of them need to be in, in the law says in accordance with each other, or basically they need to be, you know, similar. Because it's zoning code that that's what drives people that says, okay, what can I build here? What do I need to do? You know, what are the requirements that I need to do to be able to build here? And again, that's the piece that, that property owners look to when they say, okay, what can I do with my property within, within the city structure that I happen to be in? And I would say particularly as been the experience in my neighborhood is there have been some misalignment perhaps with code and, and comprehensive plan. And so why I say we need to take another look at the comprehensive plan, it's not necessarily that I think it needs to be completely upended and completely redone. But I did think we definitely need to be looking at the land use planning map. But that's basically the map that says, okay, we want, we want low density residential, medium density residential. We want mixed use. We want commercial and be able to see, have a community-driven process for people to take a look at this and say, okay, this is where we are at this point in time. Do we all agree with this? Because if we, if we, we have to be on board with this is what we want because we need to be able to have the zoning code to support that and go through the changes. And so we want to be able to try to have as much engagement in that process so that the zoning can then be changed to try to achieve that, that vision. And so that's ultimately what I see is something that I'm interested in and can make a difference. Because we have a good portion of our city that is in redevelopment right now. It's, I don't know if you had a time, had a chance to spend any time in Garden City.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
You know, we have our, we have your Searl Mitchell District, which is, you know, was designed to be an artist enclave where people could, artists could live and, and work and, and show their art. We have a thriving microbrewery and winery community that's been, that's been a million. And, and in the, the type of development that's been going on there has really been creating this, this really cool sense of that, that Garden City is, is this cool place to come and, and be. And so we want to be able to have the tools in place to be able to allow it to continue to be in that direction, move in that direction. And I believe that the, the skills that I bring to the table can be really beneficial.
Gotcha. So tapping into that business downtown, right? And again, I, I agree with you. But Garden City has this really cool and developing, you know, culture and offering to the Treasure Valley. I've been there, down there for several events, not just like the Riverside, but, you know, going to different wineries and stuff. Really cool place. Oh my God, I can't drink beer because I'm like allergic to gluten, but I'm, I'm working on it. I'm working with this guy in, in downtown Boise, so hopefully I can get over it. I'm going to go drink all the beer.
Well, okay.
All of it.
Well, you know, you can drink wine too, because we have a lot of choices.
I had Moya from the Wine Council in and she was like, garden, this is when she, I first realized, she's like, Garden City has all of these winery spots. They have live music. They have these great outdoor venues. I'm like, what? She's like, yeah, it's awesome. She takes her kids down there all the time. She, I'm not like a big wine person. She made me want to drink wine, like just sitting here talking to her. And she's here with like her giant, you know, Stanley water bottle. It was like, she's such a lovely person to hang out with. But I was like, dude, I want to be drinking wine right now. She's like, it's great. Like, it's great. Have some wine. So next time she comes in, we're going to have some. But yeah, like you have this cool thing. What do you think can be done at the city administration level or city council level to keep pushing that, that growth and support that budding business? Because again, it's private industry that's really bringing offerings to the Treasure Valley. How do you support that?
Yeah. Well, you know, absolutely. Yeah, I think through, you know, private public partnerships, I think, you know, we have a, we do have a, a visitors bureau that I think has really been able to be helpful and beneficial to some cities. I have a friend who, friends who just opened a new art gallery and frame shop. And, you know, I said, you know, you need to connect with the visitors bureau because I think that that could, tapping into that can be really beneficial to you because people do come to, to Garden City. They stay at the Riverside Hotel and they're looking for things. So there's, you know, we have our Chamber of Commerce and, you know, certainly, you know, our, our, our role as city government is somewhat confined by, by the boundaries that we work within. You know, we're in the services and amenities business. And when I say we, I guess I'm assuming I'm already in this role of leading it, but it's positive thinking, right? No, so, but I talk about the city as if it's, it is we because it is we.
Sure, sure.
And it's our city. And so cities have, they're, as I said, they're in the, the services and amenities business. They, they, you know, they provide the water, your sewer. You want to make sure water's clean, want to make sure your sewer's flowing freely. They, you know, want to, want to make sure that your parks are, are watered and your, the trash is picked up in all those places. You know, we have public safety through, you know, our, our phenomenal police department. And, and, and those are the really primary things that the city's really focused on, particularly Garden City, because it's a small city. And so really the only way that we can achieve, I think, some, the continuation of that is being supportive by making sure that the people who want to come and build something in our city have a clear idea of what they can and they can't do. I think trying to improve processes perhaps, you know, I've heard, I've heard a fair number of stories of some people who've run into some issues that's taken them far longer. You know, they thought, you know, they were in this development process and they've had this application and it's, they thought, they thought that they were moving in the right direction and had checked off all of the boxes to do what they needed to do. And then found out that maybe they still had more to do. And, you know, I think people, you know, deserve, time is money for, for folks. And, you know, we, we need to try to look at what we can be doing around processes to improve them. Are the ways that we can use technology to help with that? You know, obviously, everyone's talking about AI and, you know, are there technology solutions out there that can maybe help us streamline some processes within the city to be more effective? Because we, we have very small teams. And obviously, one of the other things I think I, I bring to the table, I'm, I'm absolutely not a tax expert in any way, shape or form. But I think I have a little bit better handle on, you know, taxes as a result of being a very informed citizen. And also I've served six sessions as a nonpartisan staff member at the Idaho Legislature. So, you know, I've learned a lot about the policymaking process as a result of that. And certainly we've kind of keyed into some of the tax policy that's been made there. And there have been some challenges or that have come up for cities over the last couple of years as a result of a, of a tax policy change that was made a couple of years ago that is not allowing cities to take 100% of the new construction, new growth that comes onto their books.
389.
You know that, do you?
Indeed, I do.
Have you had other people talking about it?
I, man, 389 is one of those things that it's so fundamentally intertwined with the happenings of cities and taxing districts at this point. And it's really confusing. You know what's amazing? I had this guy Chuck Statik, who's a city council member in Caldwell, and he's running again for reelection. And I've always been curious about why it's so confusing to people. And then I realized it's because it only got enacted like a few years ago. And so everybody's still operating under the old assumptions about taxing districts from like 2000. So I was talking and chatting with Chuck about it, like what was taxing like before? And, you know, he explained this whole thing. And then you realize like, oh, that's why nobody understands this. Because they still think it's like, you know, X, but it's totally Y. And it's not, it's not self-explanatory or intuitive, right? Like you have these really weird things which prevents people from understanding what the effects of growth is or what the effects of, you know, like Star and Middleton have these exploding populations. And everybody's like, there should be money raining from the sky, right? Like you should have all the money you will ever need. And it's like, actually, like it's the exact opposite. And by the way, every, I had this star city council candidate come in. He actually brought his tax, or his property taxes from 2020 versus 2025. And it had dropped like 50% because of all the increased growth. I was like, that's the point. You have like plummeting property tax bills because it, the, the actual cost of the budget is distributed over twice as many people now. And the budget's not going up at that same, yeah, anyway, I don't know. I get hot blood when I talk about 389. It's wild.
So, so at any rate, so you've, so you've also, you know, you've obviously learned that it's, it's creating pressure on cities. Because how, how can cities continue to meet the needs of their existing citizens and invest in the infrastructure and the things that it needs to be able to support that growth if it isn't able to really take 100% of the benefits of that growth that comes into your city?
Well, that, that brings us to like urban renewal districts, right? Like that, that is one option that you can go to the, go and essentially modify areas and say like, okay, this is our most dilapidated and in need of infrastructure upgrade. Like, let's establish this. And Garden City has one of those right now.
That is correct. Yes, it's had, it's had, I think it's had been two districts over, you know, the last, last history. And then they've just, they're just in the process or just I believe finalizing or have finalized another that actually tries, actually sweeps in what, what we consider the south side of, of the city, which is the, Shindon is the dividing line of kind of the city in a sense. And it's, it's the south side because most of the redevelopment has been focused in this area that you and I have been talking about. And, and, you know, there's certainly more to be done. I think, you know, the, the urban renewal does operate as a separate entity and it makes its decisions about how it does. So it's not necessarily influenced by, by city council. But, you know, I certainly do have some questions about that and, you know, and how the process works for, for folks there. You know, I see some, some, I think, things that I'm curious about why they are the way they are. So you see in the developing part of the city and on the east end is, you know, you're seeing new development that has a sidewalk and no curbs. And then you see another one that has curbs and sidewalk, and then there's nothing in between. And, you know, so my question is, is why do we have a brand new house that has, has a sidewalk but no curbs? And so, you know, I think that, you know, I think there are some, some questions that I have around, okay, part of that is driven by ACHD that says, okay, this is what you should do. Part of it's, it's driven by what the city thinks that you should do. And might there be some real benefit in having a street plan? And I think, I think that there's been some work going in that direction. But I'd really love to be able to support that. And is that something that urban renewal can talk about maybe doing proactively? As opposed to maybe having a homeowner have to, or property owner having to come and request that? So yes, that urban renewal definitely can help that. But you could take the example of, of my part of the city. So we are west of Glenwood, south of the river. And we have a sewer capacity issue. And so, and I was told at, at one point several months ago, it's like, we can't handle one more toilet, extra toilet. And, and I think it's actually, you know, that might've been a bit of an overexaggeration, but definitely there is a capacity challenge. Well, we're not within an urban renewal district. And, you know, I would tell you for most of the people who live there, we're pretty happy. It doesn't matter as long as our toilets work. And, you know, and there's the, but, you know, it means that anybody that wants to even do maybe an accessory dwelling unit or something like that, they're really challenged to not be able to accomplish that. So how, how would we as a city be able to do that, to be able to get that infrastructure?
And you can't use impact fees for upgrading existing infrastructure, can you?
That's right. That's right.
Yeah. So it's only the new pipeline going to the new development and they're going to hook up to the old pipeline, which doesn't really have capacity anyway.
That's right.
Unfortunate.
Yeah.
So how do you do, and again, how, this is the broader question, which is how do you, how do you engage in these upgrades when you're dealing with, you know what somebody told me the other day, which I didn't know either? That you have, some impact fees come in where the city has to match the amount of money that the developer is putting in. So it's like, it's like, yeah, look, we'll give you $50,000 for this thing, but like, you got to give us $50,000 too to put together. And so, and then you're obligated to do it because you've collected the impact fees from the developer. So the impact fees actually start draining out of the, the city's general budget that could be going to other things because of the growth. It's like, well, dang it, man. Like, like I'm not upset that we're improving this thing, but I really would have liked to spend that $50,000 at this other place over here. But now that you've built and like you've paid these impact fees, I gotta like match your dollar for dollar. What, it's like, what a wild thing.
Yeah. And I was like, as I told you, I'm not a tax expert in by any stretch of the imagination, but I am incredibly curious.
You should be my co-host. We're like, how do you see that? Like, how does that work?
Yeah, yeah. Tell me more. And, you know, so what are our options? And, you know, I think the thing when I think about going into this is that I tend to be the kind of person, I'm pretty persistent. Tend to really want to try to think about outside the box and, and definitely be asking the questions. It's like, because there's nothing that, that kind of wrinkles me more than anything is when I get told, well, we can't do that because of it's always been that way.
Can I ask you something? Do you get upset because you hear those words or do you get upset because they're delivered like that? We can't.
No. Overexaggerating, but.
Not entirely, I'm sure. Not entirely.
But I mean, I mean, doesn't, isn't that kind of, kind of gets you a little bit going?
Oh, I get the hot blood, man.
And we can come up with all the reasons we can't. And it's like, okay, well then let's maybe try to think of a reason that we can. And I'm, I'm going to tell you, sometimes there are barriers you just, you really can't break through. It's really, it, it can seem somewhat insurmountable and some, and it really does come down to priorities and pri, and, and you really have to try to stay focused sometimes on things that while you want to be able to make a difference or you have a heart to make a difference in this area, you really need to be able to try to stay focused because you may, you do have limited resources or there truly is a jurisdiction that, that controls things that you just don't seem to be able to make headway into. But, you know, a lot of this is about relationships and, and about trying to problem solve about, okay, this is a problem. But what else do we need, what do we do? I mean, the challenge with, with government is I think most of our citizens know is it doesn't move at the speed of light. It, you know, it takes a while to get things moving or to get changes. And, you know, when you talk about planning, it's, you know, we're not talking about two years. We're talking about five years, 10 years. I mean, how many times have I received, you know, or seen something on Nextdoor or, you know, Facebook about, come out and see our plan about our 35-year vision. It's like, well, this city looks very different than it did 35 years ago. I'm not, you know, all the things that maybe you thought were important 35 years ago are not necessarily what is the priority today. And you have to be adaptable.
I have not met many people who do facial expressions and imitations like I do, and you are on point today. I'm, this is every second. I'm like, yeah. Yeah. And again, it is really complex to even, I assume, five or 10 years ago, right? Like, like you're saying, it, this is a completely different vision. But staying in line with costs and inability for the limited budgets, right? Limited budgets. We can talk about infrastructure. Talk to me about services, right? Because you have police department. Because you have police department, right? What do you think about the current state of the Garden City Police Department? Are they funded sufficiently? Do you need more funding? What do you think?
You know, I think, first of all, I think our, our police department does a phenomenal job. And my husband's a volunteer with the Garden City Police Department. He, the city's trying to use some volunteers to try to, you know, fill in for some of these things that obviously a paid person could do for them. So I, their budget did this, this year, the department's going down one staff member, one officer. And so, you know, I think that the work that the, the chief is doing and, and the leadership there, you know, they're, they're looking at how they can best meet that gap. But we already have great service from our public safety agency. They, you know, our response times are, I'm sure the best in the valley, if not in the state. They're busy a lot because Garden City is literally at the crosshairs of traffic. You know, we are surrounded on two sides by state highway and then crossing the river by state highway. So there's a lot of people that come through the city that aren't even our own residents. And so it doesn't engage our officers at a much higher level than I think that, that you might see perhaps some other public safety officers spending their time focusing on. But I think, you know, I think from what I've at least read in the, the budget packet, having some conversations with the police chief. And I think, you know, there's, there's some, some sense that I think this, this first, going into next year with, you know, one less person, you know, something that I think that they can reasonably, cover well and that we're still going to be in great shape. But it's certainly something we have to continue looking to the future on how we can continue doing that.
There are Meridian, for instance, is, is attempting to run a levy to increase funding to, to their police department. It's like police, fire and I believe in-house prosecutors, so they're not contracting with Boise City prosecutors. Do you think that that's something that would be a good idea or option or something to explore with Garden City?
You know, I, I guess possibly. I mean, you know, the, this whole discussion about impact fees and that sort of thing. I think we, you know, I, I, I do believe growth should be paying for growth, no doubt about it. And, and impact fees are certainly a way to do it. Levis, I, I, I don't think that we're at that point from what I can tell, you know, but sometimes you have to cross those bridges when you get to them. And, and I, I don't, I would say probably initially my feeling is, gosh, I hope that we don't ever have to get to that point. But, you know, I think I just have to be able to say, okay, well, when we get to that bridge, we'd have to look at it. So again, if you're talking about, they're actually talking about real levy, right? Where people have to vote to.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's going to be on the ballot, yeah. And the impact fee, the problem obviously with the impact fees is you can only use them for like capital apps, like, like buildings and whatnot.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, so I think levies are very, very difficult to get past, you know? That you, you could see many, many examples of them throughout the valley.
Oh, yeah.
Of impact fees of, you know, so, you know, but the benefit to that is the voters have the, the say in that. And so essentially it's the voters who are making the choices, right? And, you know, that is really what we are, you know? And so, you know, if the citizens feel that that's not the priority that they want and they'd rather have that priority somewhere else, then, then I think to be able to have the ability to do that. So certainly cities have that as an option and can use that. And, but it's ultimately up to the, the citizens to decide if that's something that they want.
Sure, sure. Again, staying in line with this, things that are directly paid for by the city. Talk to me about parks, because I mean, again, recreation parks that you have, Garden City has a lot of potential as far as, you know, like the green belt and, you know, all of these different things. What do you think should be done or what more can be done to continue keeping the quality of life that the citizens hope to have or have already going in the right direction?
Well, definitely parks are, are something that are very important. And I definitely know the green belt is something that's pretty near and dear to people. So I just did a little, a text survey, a little over, just actually last week, sent it out to, to voters to say, hey, I'm running for Garden City Council. And what, I'd love to know what you think your most important issues are. And so, you know, first it was development, traffic, and then green belt and, and parks. We need more green space, we need more. So we certainly know that that's something that's important to people. And the green belt is the most important asset, I believe, in many respects to the citizens at least, from their point of view, that is the green belt. And what we see particularly as a, as a person who lives just right off the green belt, and I have neighbors who actually live on the green belt. You know, lots of discussion about the, the conflict of, of people that are using it. So you have walkers and you have bikers and scooters. And this is, I'll get to your other question about like the actual infrastructure part of it. You know, what, what can the city be doing more of to try to help alleviate some of those conflicts?
Outlaw e-bikes, just saying, I'm just saying.
I'm gonna tell you, maybe if that were put up for vote tomorrow, it might, it might win. I'm not sure.
I don't know that there's anybody in the history of the world who's ever liked being around an e-bike if you're not on it. Now, if you're on the e-bike, everyone loves it. Like this is great, the scooter is great, but the second you're off it, you're like, I hate that guy.
Yeah, especially if you are a walker and, you know, and you're feeling like he's zooming by you. But, you know, I've had, I, you know, have been passed by a whole lot of road bike, you know, people that is, their speeds, you know, going pretty, pretty good. And I think it's really as much about courtesy and respect as it is about speed and the type of vehicle or, you know, that you're using. And so I have a couple of ideas. I, I kind of relented to share them because it involves like having conversations with, with, you know, the police department and, and perhaps, you know, a couple of different organizations to say, there's, I have these ideas of things that we might be able to do. Can we use our police volunteers a little bit more in helping to raise awareness and safety? Can we get?
Slash tires, okay.
No, no, Matt, of course not.
Come on.
No, no, I'm a bike rider too, but I'm, I'm predominantly a walker. Yeah, but, you know, so, and can we get a couple of these other organizations that can get them involved in trying to, you know, come up? Well, I mean, this is one idea I love that I'm willing to share, but it's like.
You're holding, you're holding it close to the chest. You're like, I'm not giving up my cards.
As I said, my husband's a volunteer, so he does a lot of things like he'll shuttle police cars to, to get them serviced and things like that. But he also, they also will walk the green belt when he does his, his shift of volunteering. And, you know, they're looking for, mostly looking for anything that, you know, maybe needs to be dealt with or. Yeah, exactly, because, you know, they're just volunteers. But, you know, Boise has, has a group of volunteers and they have their electric, their electric carts. They look like little, you know, car, cars, but they're golf carts and they're electric and they're, you know, they're, they're basically patrolling and they say that in quotes, the green belt. And, and I think that they are like ambassadors, they can be ambassadors to really help people, you know, encouraging them to slow down. You know, perhaps having some materials that we make available at, you know, our hotel, you know, Riverside's the predominant, if they're renting bikes, to any of the rental bike, stores, just some, you know, some information about, you know, travel when you're passing, you know, let, make people aware, you know, slow down. You know, just trying to raise awareness that this is a multi-shared path and you need to be respectful of other people.
You know what we should do? We should do, I'm not even a Garden City resident, but this is what we should do. We should make a campaign to bring back the bell, right? Like, and get, get a bike or a bell manufacturing company to donate like five hundred bike bells to Garden City. And then like have, like, bring back the bells, like, like that goofy one.
I'm making a note about that right now.
Make a note, you know what? I'm not the, I don't gatekeep my ideas. I just put them all out there. You want to know why? Because it's of no consequence, because I'm not running for anything, but bring back the bell. Like, that's, to your point, courtesy is a big thing. And with the e-bikes, this is a big risk because they do move quickly. There is a whole lot of mass there, right? They're not these light bikes, like some of them, the big fat wheels and stuff, and they're quiet. Like this was the main concern with people and electric cars from the beginning. It's like you can't hear them backing up. So then manufacturers start putting noise in them when they're like, meh, backing up. And then some of the lame ones made it sound like a muscle car. It's like, just stop, but like bring back the bell. Like this shouldn't be that hard to, to get bells donated and have like a safety campaign. And then everybody on the green belt, like, let me hear your ring.
Gosh, do you want to run for city council?
I don't, I'm a terrible person.
I, I, I love the idea, but you see, I think what you just, what you just did is, and I think that that's how some, the problem solving starts is obviously you do have people who have a lot of different really great ideas. And, you know, I'm one individual who's running for city council and I certainly don't have all the answers to how we solve all of these problems or all these challenges. It takes, it really does take engaging people. It takes engaging our citizens, you know, which is one of the things that I really want to encourage as part of my platform is really, is continue to support citizen engagement, whether we, you know, do something like, you know, coffee with the mayor or coffee with council and, and the mayor. Or that we, you know, allow time on the, you know, city council agenda on a periodic basis that allows people to be able to come in. And, and what I would always say is when I have people who come up to me, because they obviously are always looking to us, you know? I, I've found this in my situation, kind of in my neighborhood, is people start coming to me now with all these ideas. Like, well, you know, I'm just a community citizen and you know how I've been able to make progress? It's because I've been there, I've showed up and I've had other ideas. So when I, when somebody comes to me with a, a problem, you know, I want to be able to listen to them and just say, you know, so what are your ideas? And you know what? You, I, I encourage you to get out and, and, and do the homework and then show up because that's what makes a difference. So.
Yeah, I appreciate that. You know what we need to do? We need to call Schwinn right now. Listen, you've never heard of us. We have a Garden City resident and a rando dude, but we have a really good idea. What's that song? It's like the old song from the.
Well, you know what? I am not a music, what do they call those people that can like?
I don't know, I don't know.
What is that term though? There's a term for.
Listen, I'm an idiot, I don't know terms either. I'm just saying like we could get that background music and like, let me hear the bell. Right, I just have that point. I don't know, it's, it's stuck in my head now. Like, I don't know why I got fixated on the bell idea all of a sudden. But yeah, like I very much appreciate that. And this is a, this is a problem all throughout the valley, right? And especially in Boise, they have the, like the electric scooters and it's like, transportation is great, right? Like we, and, and giving more bimodal paths and, and engaging in areas where people can transport themselves in a myriad of different ways. It's a great idea. And I, like, I think e-bikes are really cool. I just hate them in practice. Like, I think it is really, like, I've only been on one once and I was like, oh, I get it. This is the most addictive thing ever. Like you just hit the little thumb thing and boing, off you go.
And I have to say, I have to admit, I own an e-bike.
God, you're part of the problem, Wendy.
They are different classes.
Part of the problem. I know that, that, there are like three different classes and it goes down to like, you know.
And so here's the thing too, again, this is about sort of wise use because first of all, e-bikes, if you are not careful, like you said, you push that button or you just do one half rotation of your pedal and suddenly you're kind of propelled forward. And, you know, and so that's one thing that if you're an e-bike user and particularly, I mean, obviously if you buy one, you better really get used to riding it around. But this is the part that I kind of worry about when people who rent them is they don't really understand the power that they can't have or do have.
They ride it like they stole it. They're just, here we go.
But what I do, when I know that I'm coming into a situation, like if you get into the, the east end of, of the city, you know, around the, the waterfront district and the, the, where all the wineries and all that is off thirty-six and across from Esther Simplot Park. That area around the riverside, that area, the green belt gets really, really congested. And I turn my power off and I ride it just as a regular bicycle going through those areas. Anytime I know that I could potentially, if it goes, if I do one rotation of my pedal and it could take me off in a direction I don't want to go, I will ride it safely. And I think, again, these are the things that we need to try to make people aware of is that, you know, you have to be courteous and you, you need to be careful. And, and, you know, so what can, what can we do to try to raise awareness about that?
I dig that. There's a big problem in Eagles. Well, there was a, I was actually going to have Chief Ruby on or another person from the Eagle Police Department because they, like, they have really bad instances with teenagers, like blowing through traffic, doing all this stuff. It's like, look, you're fifteen, you're effectively on a motorcycle. Like you can't be going across traffic, blowing through red lights, running on the, you know, sidewalk on the wrong side. It's like, these are real, these are problems, so.
Yeah, you know, one other thing too is, you know, and this is commendable because I know our police chief and our police department has been really actively involved in this and they've been working inter-jurisdictionally with, across all the cities that have the, the green belt in them and trying to come up with consistent rules for the green belt. So that has been accomplished. I believe all the cities have actually endorsed them or enacted them as well as Ada County. So I think that that's, I look at that as a first step. You know, the, the challenge is, is what else could potentially be done? Can we do this? Because nobody likes to necessarily see gazillion signs and, you know, do we really want to start peppering the green belt with, you know, speed limit signs and things like that? And, and this plan didn't necessarily have a speed limit. It's basically you're saying you need to be, if you are reckless, reckless in riding, that you could be liable. And so, but I think we just, I think we, I think that that was a first step and we need to continue the conversation about what we can do to enhance that. Because patrolling is not always an easy thing because we have officers that really need to be out on the streets. And, but, you know, I do think we've had some requests from citizens that said, you know, we would like the police to be patrolling the green belt as well. And that's where I think is, how can we be utilizing our volunteers more effectively?
You know, you know what Garden City should do? It should do an e-bike parade and everybody come out, like dress up your e-bikes, have a parade down the green belt or wherever. And then have it be like an educational thing, like we support you having e-bikes, but like here's a safety thing. Then have a, have a free bell for the number one decorated e-bike or something. And like, I don't know, I'm just full of ideas this morning.
You are, and actually, you know, there's several organizations, as I said, you know, when I thought about these ideas and some things, okay? So who can we be tapping into? And those are, that's definitely, I've been working on that list of things that, of people I think that, you know, how can we try to engage in these conversations?
Wendy, bring me in. I'm not even a Garden City resident. I'll be like the Garden City Brain Trust idiot with a microphone.
Or he's going to be our master brainstormer.
Oh my God, just give me coffee, I'm good. Yeah, listen, we're coming short on time here. Is there any, we've talked about a lot of different things, emergency services, impact fees, zoning, renewal, recreation. What are we missing that you want to hit? Or is there anything?
Well, I think, I think we've been able to hit on the most, the, the parts that are part of my, of my platform. You know, what I would say is if, if you're looking at my platform and you, you, it's something you're really important to that you may not necessarily see there, that, that doesn't mean that it's not necessarily something that I don't care about. It's just I was really trying to think about the things I felt that I could have a more, a more, actually a quicker impact. And then I could, that, number one, because I think of what my knowledge already is and what I can do to make a difference. But, you know, certainly I'm encouraging citizens as I've been going door to door, saying, here's my website, my contact information's on there. If you, you know, if you have a question or an idea, feel free to reach out to me. And, and, you know, I think that Garden City has had accessible leaders in the past. And, and I absolutely want to be an, an accepts, an accessible leader in our city. And I hope that I get the chance. I hope that I can earn our voters. I hope I can earn our voter, I hope I can earn the votes. What am I saying?
The trust of the voters.
Yes, indeed, yes. And just get them out. And first of all, just get them out to vote and, and.
Participate.
Yeah, because, because city elections tend to be lower turnouts than a normal general election when you have a lot more bigger candidates, statewide candidates, nationally.
They impact you though.
They are, there's, honestly, there is nothing, no closer government than your city government. And, and that's why I really would encourage people to be involved and be engaged. I would say from a, from a city's perspective and a leader, sometimes it makes it a little bit messier because you can make decisions a whole lot easier sometimes when you don't have that involvement. But, you know, that's the thing that I certainly hear a lot from people is, you know, they don't do this. And, and what I would say too is just because you get involved too, it doesn't mean that you always win. You know, you probably are going to feel like you're going to lose. And I'm, I think I could potentially, you know, be in a situation where maybe somebody say, well, you know, she was this way, but she's like, she's a turncoat now.
She's a turncoat. She's a liar.
You know, at the end of the day, city, city council members have to make decisions that are in the best interests of the city as a whole. And sometimes that means that they're tough decisions that don't necessarily, you know, they're not in advantage necessarily for one individual. But anyway, I thank you for the time.
That's the burden of governing.
Yeah, I thank you for the time to allow me to be here and hear a little bit more about me and my thoughts.
Yeah, thank you for coming in. Thank you for running. And again, like, I think it's great. I think it's great that we have so many people running that care about Garden City. I will be very honest, I've started spending more time in Garden City recently and I've so enjoyed learning about the differences and, and different struggles that it's going through and just where it fits. Because like I live close to Garden City and it, it is a place I hope to, I get to spend more time with and drink all the beer. I can't wait.
Okay. Well, I hope, I hope that you're able to work that through.
Yeah, me too. Me too.
So you can enjoy it to its fullest.
Maybe I'll have to get, you know, develop a love affair with a Riesling or something too. I don't know. Anyway, thank you for coming in. Good luck with your campaign.
Thanks so much.